And then April 7, 2020, so council meeting, Ogden City. And that looks like that all council members are present in the electronic format, except for that council member Nadal Steed, who is absolutely excused this evening. Okay. So we have a full agenda this evening and I guess we'll just get started. So we're starting with a public hearing. So this public hearing is, we will be accepting public input after the presentation, after the council members have asked some questions, and then we will take action. So we'll invite Tom Kostopoulos and Lisa Stout. They'll be presenting to us. I believe we'll start with Tom.
Am I heard?
You're heard. And seen.
And seen. Can you see the slides?
Yes.
Okay.
I am, I am here. I apologize. So the budget action regarding the small business emergency loan fund is to appropriate $1 million in donations and then appropriate the $1 million for, for the use in that, in that program. The city currently has not collected $1 million, so we will watch this budget carefully and only lend what the city has collected in donations. But this allows for additional, additional donations to come to the city without an additional budget reaction from council.
Any questions for Lisa about the budget element? And Tom, would you like to give an overview of the guidelines?
Sure. The guidelines, basically, as we went through were that the loan is designed basically on a 10-year amortization, zero interest, and it is designed for critical small companies that are having immediate rent or payroll problems. So the summary is, is that as we go through those, we underwrite to determine which, which of those conditions exist. It's a little bit more extensive as far as the underwriting, but I don't want to get everybody too bored with all of the things that we go through. So we look for urgent conditions in a general role to find those out. So hmm, let's see, oh, gotta go the other way. So the Ogden Emergency Loan Fund, we have, basically, the loan fund that we're looking at now meets all the conditions that we have in our other ones. Other than, we don't have LMI qualifications going into this particular loan fund. It's available based on the urgency, so the priorities are urgency of need and who applies first until we run out of money. So our first loans have gone through the cycle. We've done a number of those, which I'll show you in just a minute. And which ones are done, if there, was there a question, Chair?
Oh, I was just gonna ask you if there's been any other donors yet.
No, we're not. We've just gone out with solicitations. I've talked to a number of people. The general condition is, is everybody wants to be helpful, but there are a little, there's some, a lot of cautiousness even amongst our bigger companies as to what they're committing to because they don't really know what future holds. My suspicion is, is that we'll get, you know, 300,000 or 400,000 more dollars more. But I don't know for sure, and the best thing we could do is just go out and, and talk to them and determine, you know, where they are. So there are some that are fairly, are fairly interested and they're just kind of waiting for the final details. And they also wanted to make sure that the council was approving this project. So that's kind of important.
Um, can the citizens donate to this fund?
Anyone can, anyone can donate that chooses to donate.
So do they contact the city or how do they do that?
They contact me.
Contact you, okay.
Yes.
And I do appreciate, and I mean, the information about the not-for-profit organizations and how they could apply for that other loan, the SBA Economics Injury Disaster Fund. And is that posted on your website too, at the city's website or just on the state?
I haven't posted it yet. We'll post it, hopefully, won't happen tomorrow. It'll likely happen the day after, but it'll be posted. Sarah's keeping the webpage up to speed.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question about how this compares to the, the federal program, that PPP grant, I guess it is. Is that, does this overlap or does it, could you do one or the other or?
You can do one or the other or both. So on your screen, it shows the Go-Ed Small Business Loan. It's a bridge loan. It has a higher amount. It's zero interest, five-year term, 12 months deferred payments. Ours is zero interest, 10-year term, up to 12 months of deferred payments. So they're similar. What we've been really focusing on are what we think are the companies that have a really hard time waiting to get through the Go-Ed system or through the Small Business Administration system. It takes some time and also those that are having it, may have a challenge figuring out how to fill out the forms. So people that have language barriers or other barriers, just barriers of understanding, they normally are businesses that are food trucks or other things like that where they've dealt just predominantly in cash businesses. Although we will have some, you know, slightly bigger ones. So what we're trying to do is just augment and carry a bridge in the immediate state so that we can help people. My guess, and this is complete guess from my standpoint, is we're gonna see a lot come in during the first three or four weeks, then it'll kind of flatten. And then as people find out what the real damages, it'll pick up again. So those are kind of where we are. So you can see that there's comparisons. There's, there's similarities with the Paycheck Protection Program, the federally guaranteed loan form approved. We know that a number of our local businesses have been approved, but they have no idea how long it will take to fund. So that's why some of them are opting to use us as a first step and then they'll kind of see what they can do in the next. So these are the emergency loan funds that are currently out there. We have, as you can see, the loans that are highlighted in, in the ELF non-CDBG would come out of the primary fund that we have and then in the pipeline for the second week that's coming up is another 110,000. So we obviously can't fund all of those based on the balances that we have, but we'll do the best that we can with this first tranche of money until we do the second CDBG money that, that will be talked about tonight with Ward and Kathy. So it's just kind of taking one step at a time, trying to make sure we have available funds to meet critical needs and then to continually augment the loan funds. So there was a question asked whether there would be more money. We were notified that by the federal government, there will be more money, approximately $600,000. And that hasn't been, that isn't part of this particular consideration. That will come later.
Any other questions or comments from council members? I see no hands or movement.
Do we have Tom's PowerPoint? I didn't, it came to us.
I can send it. This is off of my laptop.
Okay.
I think I sent you the one from the work session.
From last week.
Okay, I'll look, I'll look there.
And that doesn't, it doesn't significantly differ from this one. It just shows you additional loans that are coming through.
Thanks. Thanks so much for your presentation, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
Now we're going to take public input on this item alone. And we'll accept those via Zoom. So if you are able to raise your hand in that, from the chat button, I'm not sure if Brandon has more instructions for you. We will just take people in the order that they raise their hand best that we can. And if your name is not in the chat area, we'll have to call you by your phone number or the last three digits. Any additional details to that, Brandon?
Nope, that was explained beautifully. If you do not know how to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, on the web browser, if you click on manage participants, or participants, rather, you should see the option to raise your hand in the panel that pops up on the right.
We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and of course state your name for the record when you begin. I'm not seeing any hands raised, but I'm gonna wait just a couple more minutes in case people are figuring it out. Yeah, I'm not seeing any hands raised. I hope that I'm not missing anything. Do you agree, Brandon? You don't see any hands raised?
Correct. I do not see any hands raised.
Oh, there we go. I see one now.
Hello?
Hi.
This is Betty Sawyer calling. I had a question regarding how community, those businesses were being notified of the availability. I may have missed that in Tom's presentation. Did he share? Is it just on the website? Did anything go out, especially when he was talking about marginalized community businesses?
Yeah.
Great point, Betty. Did you have anything else to say? I just don't want to take up your three minutes. If you have anything else you'd like to say.
Nope, that's it for now.
Thank you so much for calling in. And Tom, do you have response?
So we notified all business licensees directly and then also on our webpage. So there's two forms. So anybody that has a business license will send a direct notification and a link to the website and basic information. And we continue to go out with information as anything new develops. So the loan programs that are coming from the federal government and like some of the things that we're asked about with the new not-for-profits, those will go out as notices on the web, on the webpage. And so that's how we've gotten everybody to know so far.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Any other public input comments? Okay, not seeing any. It's, uh, let's see, is this a public hearing? It is. Would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. All second.
Okay, sorry. I was confused for a minute. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember Stevens, I believe, and a second by Councilmember Hire to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Hopefully, everybody's still unmuted. I think they are. Yes, great. So now we will need to take some action on the Small Business Loan Program guideline amendments. Anybody like to make a motion?
Chair, I will go ahead and make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2020-6.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Blair and a second by Councilmember Hire to adopt the proposed Resolution 2020-6. This is a roll call vote. Maybe I should call the roll call? Oh.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
He's muted. Okay, aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chubberka?
Aye, and that passes. Thank you very much. And now, any action on the following, the fiscal year 2020 budget amendment?
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2020-12.
Second. Okay, so I think I have a motion by Councilmember Hire and a second by Councilmember White to adopt proposed ordinance 2020-12. This is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Chubberka?
Aye, and that passes. Thank you very much, everybody. So now we'll have reports from the administration. The public hearing was previously set on this item, so there's no action required. But we'll invite Ward Ogden and Kathy Fuentes to report to us on the Consolidated Plan, Amendment Number Two, and the Fiscal Year 2020 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number Two.
Okay, am I on?
You're on. Let me see your station.
Thank you very much. This is Ward Ogden. I'm the Community Development Manager. And I also have Kathy Fuentes, our Grand Administrator, and hopefully Tom is going to chime in in case he has comments as well. So we have an item which will be heard by the council on April 21st, and it involves an amendment to our annual action plan and an amendment to our five-year consolidated plan. The amendment to, the reason, this is for the public. I'll just kind of quickly go over the reasons why we do these amendments. Each year, the federal government provides some grants to the city for using our community and economic development programs. And we do a five-year plan. And then each year, we do an annual action plan for the use of those dollars. They involve the Community Development Block Grant and the home dollars. And so whenever we do an amendment or change to the scope or budget, location, et cetera, intended beneficiaries of the programs, we, we need to do an amendment. So we're here to do a couple of things today. So if you move to the next slide, the changes to the consolidated plan, the five-year plan, it's a fairly simple addition to the plan. Because of the, the current pandemic, the federal government has given the, the ability for us to use what's called an urgent need certification. Normally, with our Community Development Block Grant and our home funds, excuse me, with our Community Development Block Grant funds alone, we have the, the requirement that 70% of the funds are used towards benefiting low and moderate income individuals and benefiting the community of low and moderate income. And 30% can be used for other purposes, in which typically is used for slums and blight alleviation. There's a provision for using an urgent need certification, but that, we have never had that happen until now. So the urgent need certification is a very important thing because it relaxes documentation and speeds the process of getting funds to these businesses who need the funds through the pandemic. And so we need that, that flexibility and that, that provision. So we need to add that to our, our consolidated plan and to our action plan. So we're amending our consolidated plan to simply add this paragraph that basically says, in accordance with the section of the code, that we're submitting our substantial amendment for the five-year plan and we intend to adopt the urgent need certification to assist businesses impacted by the COVID-19. And it's, it's basically that. So it allows us, once adopted, that we can then start helping businesses with a different type of documentation that's easier to qualify and easier to get the money out the door. So it's a very helpful thing. Next slide. So, and then we have an amendment to our action plan. That amendment is to also, if you look at the, the bottom line, it's, we're also putting that urgent need certification in the action plan because we have to also declare that we're using it this year. And then we're doing some things that are kind of a routine thing, which we've already done before. Each year, we, we reconcile our budget with the actual carryforward dollars and the actual program income dollars that, that we have. This year, we're doing a second amendment because we have additional loan payoffs and some properties that were sold. We have a significant amount of, of program income that we've received that needs to go back into the budget to be used this year. And so we're doing a second amendment to bring some new money forward from the program income. Then we're also, to benefit the businesses, we are reallocating some funds from our Target Area Public Improvements and the Infill Housing Program to, to go into the business loan. So those are the recommendations for the plan. And we'll show you what those are in the next slide. Okay, just change the slide now. Okay, budget revenue changes. So you can see under the Amendment Number One, that we did just a little while ago, we had $5.7 million budget and now we're increasing that by $778,000. We have a number of increases, the loan payoffs and some homes that were sold, bringing in $578,000 in new block grant money. And then the home program is bringing in $745,000. Our HELP program has also brought in just over $54,000 in new money that we want to put back in the budget as well. So that's the total of 778. Next slide. And here's how those funds by program are, are being requested to be allocated. We'll just go down them really quickly. The Target Area Public Improvements, you'll see a change, dropping the 250,000 out of that program. The Infill Housing, another 100,000 coming out of that. Some additional funds going back into the Special Economic Development Program. The micro enterprise receiving that $350,000 that came out of the Target Area Improvements and the infill. And then the Quality Neighborhoods, basically just getting back the proceeds of sale from the homes so that we can go do more projects. The money going back into the HELP program. And then the, the admin for our overhead, the city's overhead, we have a provision for using some of the proceeds to use to help administer the programs. So that's what the $120,000 is there. So keep your eye on the Micro Enterprise Loan Program line, which is the second light colored, light blue line in the program. And you'll see that that's a $350,000 increase, leading up to a $530,000 budget amount. But over the past few days, we've come to realize that the, with the new urgent need, the urgent need, a national objective that we're able to use with the block grant, that it's actually more to our advantage to use the, the money under the Small Business Loan Program than the Micro Enterprise Program. As you recall, micro enterprises have to be an, an establishment of five or fewer employees and one of them has to be the owner. So if we do the loans under the Small Business Loan Program, we can serve the micro enterprise businesses as well as all other businesses. So it basically just provides a lot more flexibility in terms of how the money goes out. So the next slide, you'll see the one that we're actually recommending that we be, that we adopt. That third line now goes to be the Small Business Loan Program, where the money will go. We're only reflecting the, the budget line items that have changes to them. And so you'll see the, the money, instead of going into micro enterprises, now goes into the Small Business Loan Program. That's the change that we've made since, because we're still in the draft phase of this. We're not adopting it yet. We're still kind of in the comment period and the council can choose, you know, based on your, your thoughts and your feelings. You, you can choose how you would like to do it. But this is how this, the staff is now, administration is recommending that the additional money goes into the Small Business Loan Program. Are there any questions on that? Okay, maybe just move to the next slide. And the next slide basically talks about the Citizen Advisory Committee. We have, in fact, talked to the Citizen Advisory Committee about these changes and the budget was approved by them. And they did talk about the urgent need certification. Some comments came through about just wanting to make sure that there was cross-checking to make sure that businesses didn't abuse the program. And as Tom had brought up, there has to be documentation that the, that the funds are actually used for a need that is generated through the pandemic crisis. And HUD has also documentation requirements for the use of all these dollars. So those things will in fact be tracked and reported. Next slide. And the, this is kind of the wrapping it up. What our recommendation will be on the 21st is that we adopt the urgent need certification to allow Ogden to help businesses impacted by the COVID-19 in both the con plan and the action plan. And that we increase the program budget by 778,000 and that we reallocate some Target Area Public Improvement money and Infill Housing money to help out with the business loan program. The final slide, if you go two more down, I think you'll see, one more. Keep going. There. This talks about the CARES Act funding that Tom had referred to. This, of course, we're not recommending this go into the current year budget because we don't have enough information and we're not authorized to actually implement it yet because we don't have all of the regulations and, and everything that goes along with it. But what they're telling us at this point is that it's, it's, it's regular Community Development Block Grant. It's not a disaster relief version. So it has all the HUD requirements associated with it, although they have given us some waivers that make it easier for us to get this out the door. And it's targeted towards, towards the community's impact through this pandemic crisis. So it's, there'll be a number of things that we can research and, and try and get back to you with as we work through our consolidated plan process. And we're in the middle of that right now. And we anticipate working with you on a discussion on that, hopefully on the 21st of April as well, and have some more feedback from HUD in terms of what this money can be used for. So at this point, it looks like the business community is really the, the most impacted sector that has, you know, the eligibility for these funds. So that's kind of where we're leaning at this point in terms of the recommendation. So that ends my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Chair, I have a couple, Chair, I have a couple of questions. Thanks, Ward and Kathy, for doing this. I know, I know it's a lot of shuffling right now. I just have a real quick question. So we did not give the BIC any more money, but we're increasing the, the loan amount, the micro enterprise loan. Do we need, I mean, is that, do we need to think about that as far as, isn't that an administrative, is the BIC in here more of an administrative need? And would they be needing to do more background checks or whatever? I don't know what kind of credit checks, sorry, those kind of things? Or is that going to come out of the processing of the micro enterprise loan fund?
It's actually coming out of, what we've done is reassigned internally people to do the loan underwriting. So Sarah, myself, and John Olin have all just pitched in to basically offset the processing issues that are going on. So we don't have enough time to really gear up and train people. So we've basically just used what we have at hand and continued to do that. We borrowed Mark on the, to make sure that he's on the loan committee and, and gone through the same loan committee and we've met a number of times. So we've kind of had to patch it together, using our loan backgrounds from the past and kind of kept it moving forward that way because of the timeframes. So yeah, it's, it's putting a lot more workload on the BIC for the short term. Our hope is, is that it's not Our hope is, is that it's not a long-term process. But that's how we're dealing with it today.
Thanks. I just, I wanted to make sure we were covering our administrative costs, so.
Yes, and Marcia, in addition to the staffing adjustments that Tom had talked about, the the fund sources themselves can, we can use some program delivery funds right out of the, right out of the loan fund to help supplement the wages and the staff costs.
Perfect.
Any other questions or comments?
And your hope is to get it in by the, one more hearing on the 21st and then in, is that correct?
Yes, that would be the adoption of the amendments and it would be, once it's adopted, we can then start rolling with both the funding and the urgent need certification, which gives a lot more clarity and speed to the process.
And just for clarification, we've already set the public hearing for April 21st on this item. We did want to do a presentation now so that if public has some feedback before that hearing, they could submit in the written form or make phone calls to the council office or also reach out to council members. And then during the public hearing, they would have the opportunity to provide live public input. So next we have Lisa Stout, who will tell us about the budget amendment that goes along with this for the annual action plan. Thank you, Ward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council members. I need to apologize. I keep forgetting to introduce myself. I am Lisa Stout. I'm the comptroller for Ogden City. I execute the budget and in accordance with state law and, and the adoption of the changes to the annual action plan, we have a budget action that needs to happen. The budget consideration is to correct the budget in the, in the major grants fund to match what has been proposed with the changes in the annual action plan. I have just summarized the changes. I, I, there is a difference between Ward Ogden's number and my number because we will normally round our budgets to the nearest $25. However, these numbers are very close. Some of them are combined, the administrative cost, the 117 and the 52 and the 49,000 in the reduction to the BIC, those total to the 120, 200 that relates to the changes in the annual action plan. The help loan, the change of 54,000. The quality neighborhoods program, the 226 and the 220 relate to the 440 that is a change to the annual action plan as well. And then the other changes to the micro enterprise loan, 350,000 increase, the special economic development program of an increase of 156,000. Infill housing is reduced 100,000. And the area, targeted area public improvements is reduced 250,000. Any questions regarding the budget action?
Any questions? Thank you, Lisa. So for this item, we will need to set the public hearing for April 21st as well. If anybody would like to make a motion.
Chair, if I could just make one comment. So between the items, you had heard that the allocation of the money was going to go from the micro enterprise loan to the small business loan program. The documents that you have in front of you to set the public hearing still show the money going to that micro enterprise loan program. So what we would recommend is that you, as you set the public hearing, that you clarify that that change needs to be made too. And then that way we can get it noticed correctly. And then in a couple of weeks, as we go through, as the public is able to review those and comment, all of those documents are correct. So I sent you some language earlier today, some potential motion language. If there's any question on that, I'd be happy to answer that, but we are recommending that you clarify that as you set the public hearing.
Thank you for that reminder, Glenn. Does anybody need that suggested motion language? I found mine. I'm just waiting for a motion on the item. Unless you need help doing so.
All right. Language too. I'll take a stab at it. I would, I would move that the council set the public hearing on ordinance 2020-14 for April 2020. The change to add 350,000 to the small business loan program instead of the micro enterprise program.
Thank you.
Second.
Great. So we have a motion by council member Hare and a second by council member Lopez to set the public hearing for the proposed ordinance 2020-14 with the added language around changing the funds from small business to micro enterprise loan program. This is the voice vote for setting the public hearing in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So much. That passes. Next up on our agenda, we have the bond parameters for water sewer and storm utilities. And we have Brandy Johnson from the city that's going to lead us out. And then we have guests Laura Lewis and Fred Philpott that will also join us to talk about it.
Chair, I'm sorry, do we have to take action on both A and B or did you just take action on A and B?
A doesn't require any action because it was already set, the opinion was already set prior on April 21st.
Thank you. I'm trying to keep up. I really am.
Me too. I'm only able to do it because I have it written out in front of me.
All right. We ready to go?
I think we are. Is that you, Brandy?
Yes. All right. Yeah, this is Brandy Johnson and I'm the city treasurer. And as you recall, on March 31st in council work session, we discussed the proposed bond parameters resolution. And we're asking the council to consider setting a public hearing on April 28th for the proposed bond parameters resolution 2020-5 that authorizes the issuance of water sewer and storm sewer bonds not to exceed 58 million to fund various utility capital projects. I will now turn the time over to Fred and Laura Lewis from LYRB to report on the objectives of utility rate structures and the financing proposal.
Thank you, Brandy. I see Fred is unmuted and I'm just looking for Laura.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
Hi.
Hi, this is Fred with Louis Young Robertson in Burningham. And I believe Laura is on.
I am. Hello.
Yeah, so we, the first part of this presentation, we'll go through the findings of the utility rate study for each of the utilities that we looked at. And with the understanding that our primary objective with any rate analysis is, is to look at ensuring that we have sufficient revenues to maintain the system. And we're also balancing the metrics that have been established through previous analysis with regards to reserves and funding capital improvements as well as debt coverage. In this iteration of the analysis, we're not proposing any changes to the tier structure. And we're continuing to promote conservation through a tiered approach with a base rate for water, the water enterprise. If you jump to the next slide. The key policies that we're looking at, again, as I mentioned, is revenue sufficiency, ensuring that each utility can pay its own way. For each of the utilities, there's a cash reserve target. For each of the utilities, that's 360 days of cash on hand except for water, which that was set at 150 days of cash on hand with a target of 180 days. It's important to note that the reason we have these reserves is for, which the city has utilized that cash reserve for projects, emergency projects in the past. In addition, the city has policies, a policy to utilize debt strategically and to maintain a debt service coverage ratio of it at least two times. For water, that was set at one and a half times minimum coverage. And again, that's ensuring that you have enough net operating revenue to cover your debt service payments. One and a half times or two times that debt payment. Jump to the next slide. As we've been going through this analysis, we've presented some preliminary data to staff and to the council. And as we know, the conditions that we're in right now are causing some changes and some pausing throughout many communities in Utah. So we looked at a revised approach from our previous analysis where we had some potential rate increases. Here, we're looking at foregoing rate increases for this iteration of the utility rate study. So no rate increase into the model for fiscal year 2021. We do have inflationary increases built into the pro forma as we move forward over the next five years, but we've removed all rating, rate increases above that inflationary amount. And we do recommend that as the council considers utilities in the future and adjustments to the utility rates, that you look at a five-year period for adjustments to maintain the CIP and the financial metrics. Again, though, for the purpose of this analysis and what we're presenting today, we have removed any rate increases other than, other than the inflationary increase. In order to achieve our objectives or, or maintain the cash reserve and that fund balance, the debt coverage, we have looked at strategic use of bonding right now as Laura will discuss in a little bit. As a result of some of the uncertainty in the market, we're at a point where interest rates are much lower than they have been in the past. And so it can be a good opportunity for communities to look at issuing debt. So within the model, we're proposing approximately 45 million. The parameters resolution sets a higher amount. And again, Laura will speak to some of that, but for the purposes of the model, we are utilizing debt to bridge in essence, the gap with regards to rate increases through the use of bonding to ensure that we can fund the immediate needs with relation to the capital improvement program. So with each of the enterprise funds, this is a summary of what has been proposed based on a scenario analysis. As you can see, for each of the enterprise funds, we're proposing just the inflationary increases over the next five years. That's what's built into the model. With regards to water sewer and storm, we do need to infuse bond proceeds to ensure that we can fund the capital improvement program as presented. And those are structured immediately in the models related to those upfront capital projects. With regards to refuse, no need for bonding. We are using some cash balance to fund some equipment that pulls that cash balance down, but you'll see in the next slides that that increases over time within the refuse fund. So if you jump to the next slide, oh, sorry, the, in a couple of slides. The next three slides show the potential projects being considered for funding with bond proceeds. There's a substantial amount with relation, with relation to water projects. If you jump to the next, you can scroll through the next couple of slides. These are the sewer projects that are being proposed as part of this project and then the potential storm water projects that would be potentially included for bond proceed utilization. This slide provides a summary of each of the enterprise funds, cash reserve, projected cash reserve over time. So you can see 2021 through 2025. And most of these, you can see that the cash reserve declines. In some cases, it falls below the target amount within the five-year planning horizon. What that is suggesting is that the council will need to, and staff will need to reevaluate the proposed future capital improvement projects and make adjustments or reevaluate proposed rate increases. So there may be a need to increase rates above the inflationary amount in order to achieve the proposed capital improvement projects that you have planned for the next several years. Water specifically in storm fall below the target amount, whereas sewer, you can see the trajectory is approximating that minimum amount. And so within that, at the end of that five-year period, we may need to reevaluate the sewer fund. As I mentioned, with regards to refuse, the fund balance is being spent down upfront, but you can see that that trajectory is more positive as we replace that fund cash reserve over time. Jump to the next. Here's an illustration of the debt coverage for each of the enterprise funds. This is assuming that additional debt is utilized to fund capital improvements. In each of these funds, we stay above the target amount. Refuse is not shown because we don't have any debt service there that is applicable to the revenues within the refuse fund. But there is capacity there for additional bonding in the future as well. So that's a positive perspective. The next slide combines the debt coverage for all of the utilities, sorry, storm, water and sewer, showing that we stay above our target amount when we combine the revenue stream and the proposed and existing bonds for each of the enterprise funds. I'll switch over to Laura for this portion.
Thank you, Fred. So if we're going to proceed with bonding, the next thing we need to do is work with your staff to finalize a project costs. I think the, the list of projects that Fred went over, I think that's what they want to get done. We just need to evaluate what the, the costs of those are likely to be and put that in into the bond issue. We'll look here shortly at a calendar of events that has just some of the highlights on it. And then we'll work with the finance team, your legal counsel, underwriters, once they're selected to price and close the bonds. All right, next slide. So the, the market has certainly been very volatile. Not shown on this graph is February 24th, I think, was the day that municipal bond yields hit their all-time low. They have since climbed higher than what is shown on this graph and are now starting to come down. I'm sorry, the colors are a little bit too similar, so we're testing your ability to distinguish different colors.
We need a test tonight. We need a test.
There you go. Okay. The third line down from the top, the top two lines are the, the yields of past couple of days. What is being shown here is the AAA scale for MMD. That stands for municipal market data put out by Thomson Reuters every day. This AAA scale assumes a general obligation bond. So if we were to have issued water and sewer revenue bonds in today's market, you would be at a spread above where that gray line is because you're not issuing general obligation bonds. They're viewed as the, you know, the safest, therefore the lowest yields. My guess is that we would expect something like 25, a quarter percent interest to 35 basis points above, above that gray line or so if we were in the market right now. I wouldn't advise being in the market right now. Or so, if we were in the market right now, I wouldn't advise being in the market right now. There's just not, there's not quite enough demand. But I fully expect that when, you know, we have a better handle on when the coronavirus cases have peaked and start to decline, I fully expect that people have pulled their money out of municipal bond funds and are just sitting on the cash, will come back into those bond funds. It's, I have a call scheduled tomorrow and I've received some other written stuff. I'm seeking to try to understand the mentality of, of those bond purchasers that have pulled their, their cash out because bonds are so secure and it's, it's just sort of a head scratcher to me. But when there are, you know, crisis, the market does not act rationally. And I think we're facing that very thing. So I do expect that we'll continue to see improvement in municipal yields. And my goal here is to have the city ready to go into the market when we have a great day to market again. I, I know it will come back. I don't know what day. But if we wait until that great day and then we start, then we're going to be behind the power curve. So next slide. So the anticipated sources and uses of the bond funds are listed below. A total bond amount of 44,615, 44 million for the project construction of the list that we showed you, 615,000 for financing costs, rating fees, professional fees, underwriter fees, et cetera, et cetera. We currently are structuring the debt service so that it, we're trying to wrap it around your existing debt service, as you'll see on the next slide. Don't go to it yet, but as you'll see on the next slide, we haven't quite hit the, the point where we're filling up the backend like we could to shorten the life of the debt. So next slide. So this is a slide depicting your existing water and sewer and storm sewer bonds. And with the, the new debt, the, that top kind of light brownish bar added, added on. We will work to, you know, one of the ideas I have that will, you know, perfect as we proceed through the financing is to shorten the bonds up to a final maturity of 2043 by making those last two payments larger and making them look, I know, a lot more like those previous couple of years. So that is something that we'll, we'll work to perfect as we, you know, know the actual interest rates and that kind of thing, but it gives you an idea. So the parameters resolution that you will be asked to address after the public hearing, if you choose to set it for April 28th. The parameters resolution has a much higher potential par amount. That is because of a couple of things. And one, I think I need to get some language added into, into the, the parameters that you'll be considering is there are two storm sewer bonds outstanding that we have contemplated refunding if the rates are low enough. There are also some of your existing water bonds are potentially refundable on a taxable basis. And maybe kind of a head scratcher right now because taxable and tax exempt yields have widened out quite a bit, but they were, you know, very tight prior to the crisis. And so I'm just trying to leave headroom in case we can bring other refunding issues in and save money, or if there are other projects that are identified. So if we end up, you know, at, at some really great rates, those bar, or those line graphs that we showed a little bit ago, even though rates have gone up from their, you know, all-time lows in February, the, you know, they sort of top out in 30 years below two and a half percent. So it is not a, and that's right now. And again, I think they'll tighten up. That is not a bad time to issue bonds. So if there are other projects that are identified, when we, you know, get closer to knowing what those rates are, we have a little bit of headroom to, to bring those in. All right, next slide. So I think it's important to remember that with this particular bond issue, no rate increases are necessary beyond the, the typical inflationary increases that you adopt most every year. No additional increases are necessary to support the issuance of the bonds and maintain, you know, coverage and your cash. However, what, you know, Fred has discussed is in order to maintain financial benchmarks for your utilities, you either need to do one or two things in the future. So we're fine, good with this issue. You don't need to do anything in the future. If you want to maintain the capital improvement project list that has been recommended, that will allow your pipes to be replaced every 80 years. If you want to maintain that in, in the plan that has been set forth, you will, you will need to raise rates or you will need to determine that you're not going to maintain that capital improvement plan. And you will need to then, you know, push those improvements out further. Next slide.
Laura, can I ask you a question about that?
Of course, Richard.
Is there, is there any kind of a reason that, that you wouldn't want to do that? Or would that just, it, it seems kind of careless to me if we, nope, we're not going to maintain our pipes.
Yeah, it, kicking the can down the road will lead to catastrophe. No one can predict when, but, you know, the, the likelihood increases every year. Those pipes become weaker. And, you know, when you have to repair something, I mean, I'm, I'm no expert. I just work with a lot of cities. Justin is probably better, better able to speak to this. But when you have to repair something in a, in an emergency situation, it costs you more and, you know, in man-hours and supplies, I mean, in every size, shape and form. And it, it very greatly disrupts your citizens. If you have a, you know, water line break, whoever, wherever that water line's going, they're not, they're not going to get water until it's fixed, as opposed to doing it in a methodical planned way. And, you know, it, it, it is hard for city councils, I think, to, you know, sort of shore themselves up to spend this kind of money and do the projects and stay on top of them because it's out of sight, right? I mean, if you do a new park, woo-hoo, people are yay, thank you for that new park because they can see it. When you're, you know, tearing up the roads so that you can put in new sewer and water lines, mostly people are like, wow, when are they going to quit tearing up my road? But, you know, it certainly is a responsibility of city councils to take care of the stuff that is out of sight because it's very critical for the functioning of your city. So it would be my advice that in the future, you consider, you know, reasonable rate increases so that you can continue on that plan of, of replacing those pipes.
Yeah, I just, I, that comment, I just didn't know if there was some, some financial principle that I just am unaware of that, that made it smart to do that. But I, you know, so thank you.
Councilmember Stevens, did you have a question?
Now, to go along with that, in 2007, we were presented with a rate increase. And at that time, we could not kick that can down the road. We had to have some projects taken care of. The builder plant up the canyon was in bad shape. The line coming down the canyon was in bad shape. And we couldn't shift water from the north end of town to the south end and vice versa. And the councils before us band-aided our system and they did not put improvements. And so we were to a point where we could not do that anymore. And so we had to decide, are we going to improve the system? Or are we going to increase rates? And the most logic aspect is to increase the rates so that we could make the improvements that are necessary. Along with that, I have a question. That list of projects, could we MRIs that out to seven years? Would that be a disaster if we did that or, or eight years?
Well, in addition to the projects that are listed, I mean, those are the projects that we're planning on financing out of this series of bonds. But in addition to that list of projects, there is a, a long, you know, maybe not that long as the current list, but there is a long list of other projects that need to be done every, you know, two to three years in order to stay up with that pipe replacement process.
There is a, there is a question that I have. There is a time when we will reach a point where the rates will be so high that our, that some of our citizens will be impacted with that. Is that a consideration we need to take a look at?
It is definitely a consideration. One of the things, we, we have a, Fred has spent a lot of time in the last several months putting together a very detailed financial sustainability plan or rate study for each of your utilities. And affordability is something that we are always watching. It's something that we know that you care about and it's something frankly, that the rating agencies care about and the, you know, the people that buy your bonds. Because if the rates aren't affordable, what's going to happen? Oh, people are going to quit paying them. There's going to be delinquencies and all kinds of, you know, not positive things. So it, it is something that we, we watch. And I, we don't have that, that slide here. But, you know, when you're, when you're faced with that decision in a couple of years, it will be a part of the presentation. What I, you know, wanted to make sure, Richard, that the council knew is, you know, I'm, I'm not advocating for not raising rates in the future and not doing your projects. What I wanted to make sure is that you knew that, you know, we're not, by, by doing this bond issue, we're not binding your hands to have to do that in the future. You're going to have to, you know, take up the next round of, of, of projects and look at another bond or what those rate increases, you know, would, would look like. Something that might be of interest to you, I won't name city names, but there was another city to the south of you several years ago that decided, you know, they wanted, they were, you know, sort of, no way, Jose, are we going to do bonds? We did a, a utility rate study for them and said, okay, well, if you still want to do these capital projects, here's how your rates have to increase. And it was, they were very, very large increases. And they've imposed them for several years. And I don't know whether it was a new member on the council or someone had an aha moment or whatever. But the question we got asked this year is, um, is there any way we could finance these projects so that we don't have to have such large increases? And that is one of the benefits of, you know, financing those improvements is that the people who are, you know, using those improvements over the next 40, 50, 60 years will be paying for them as opposed to trying to cram all of that expense onto your, you know, citizens in the next couple of years. So, you know, when we do your rate study, we look, you know, we try to wrap the debt around the existing debt. So as it falls off, we're, you know, backfilling that, you know, and doing all we can to, you know, keep those rates as low as, as possible.
And that was the only question I was going to ask Laura is, you know, I've only been involved in this work for a couple of years and I'm beginning to grasp it more and more. And being on the bond call the last time was helpful. But I think when people see the amount of debt that we have in these, in this area, when you look at those bonds over time, and then also when they see like the big $600,000 fees, et cetera, you know, that's the only thing I was kind of, kind of asked is pointing out maybe what the advantages are of spending that kind of money now and not having the rate increase, et cetera.
Right. So we, and I won't bore you to death with the presentation here, but we have, Fred and I have done a really good presentation that we gave at League of Cities in Town several years ago that talked about, you know, the benefits of financing. And, you know, I, I always start that out when I'm asked by a city council member or constituent, you know, that is very anti-debt. I ask them, how did you finance your home? You know, do you own a home or you, does it have a mortgage on it? I just, you know, did the, the census questionnaire that has that question. And I have yet to ask, you know, to meet someone and they probably exist. And I would have a follow-up question of, okay, if you paid cash, how long did it take you, et cetera, et cetera? I have yet to have anyone say to me, I, you know, I paid cash for my, my home. And the reason for that is that we all know it would take forever, right? To save up that kind of, of, of money. And, and the presentation that Fred and I did, we actually, we sort of, you know, fictitious, we picked like a, someone from the audience and said, you put on a U of U hat and someone from the audience, and you put on a BYU hat. And then we walk them through using all, you know, historical data in terms of housing price increases and interest rates and whatever. And we walk them through, if you, if you really, you know, dug your heels in and said, I'm going to pay cash for my house, we showed how long it would take because of inflation. And, you know, that the person who actually borrowed at reasonable rates actually fared better in the long run. And then I say to these people, well, for a city, this is these kind of large capital expenses. People get very confused and understandably frustrated when they hear that our, you know, federal government has, I don't even know how many trillion. I haven't kept up lately. But, you know, that our, our national debt is humongous. It worries, too scares me. And the, and, and they have that in their head and they try to think, oh, debt is bad because cities are, you know, issuing debt. The gigantic difference that you have to remember to educate your constituents on is the federal deficit is to pay for operational stuff. I mean, they, when they print money all the time and, and they're borrowing to pay salaries and operational costs, you are legally barred from doing that. We cannot borrow operational expenses under Utah law. So these are for those large capital expenditures. And another anecdotal story I'll share with you. Years ago, I was retained by Riverton City. The mayor there had worked at the LDS church offices, a very, very conservative guy. I, you know, had, had kind of that mentality of not going to do debt. And there was a road that goes from Bangater, 134 South, went from Bangater West. And it was a death trap. I had a friend who lived on that road and it was, or off, just off that road was horrible. And the mayor wanted to meet with me and, and, you know, talk about, you know, bonding. He was really opposed. I mean, he let me know that. And so I said to him, okay, mayor, let's, let's do this. You tell me, use whatever resources you want. You go do the research with your staff or whatever, what you think the, in the construction inflation is going to be on that road. And we'll do a model of, it's going to, you know, if it costs X today, what's it going to take for you to save up the money in the city coffers to build that road compared to, I will show you what it, I mean, I will provide, you know, evidence and supporting data to show you what it would take to bond for that road today. I think that the analysis was that he could save up and pay for that road in eight years. And we could have it financed and paid for in about 10. And I said to him, so you have to think, mayor, of, you'll have the use of that road for seven years. If someone gets killed on that road, because it's not in great shape, while you're saving up money to pay cash for it, is that really worth it? And lo and behold, Mr., you know, conservator, he's a nice guy. I really like him a lot. And he said, I see your point. And they went ahead and bonded for that road. So it, you know, it needs to be used wisely, but used wisely debt really can help a city financially meet its needs.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I think you were going to go through the calendar.
Yeah, just some high points. So what we're hoping that you will do following this presentation is to set a public hearing on the issuance of the bonds for April 28th. If you take, if, if you, you know, choose to do that, then a bond council will publish the notices related, the required notices related to that public hearing in the paper. It has to be published twice. Then that hearing will be set for April 28th. And our hope is that following that hearing, that you would consider for adoption the parameters resolution, the one we refer to as a super parameters resolution, because it will name your pricing committee. And at that point, as long as we stay within those parameters, there is no need to come back to the city council. City council representatives are, will participate in that pricing committee and do have to, you know, vote on the pricing committee to proceed with the bonds once we know the final pricing and sizing and all of that. That would, you know, if you, if you agree to adopt that April 28th, it paves the way for us to get the ratings presentation and the ratings done and, you know, have a, a pricing in June. You know, I'm, my crystal ball is broken. I think that by June, we'll be at a, you know, very good place to price the bonds. If for some reason we're not, we will not price them. I mean, we will have everything ready and we'll wait for July or August or whatever we need to, you know, to, to get those bonds priced.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions for Laura or Fred?
Oh, thank you. I forgot there was that slide. That just went through what I asked you to do.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. So if there are no other questions or comments, I'd be happy to take any motions on the issue.
Chair, just real quick, could Laura, just for the public's information, how will these bonds be repaid and in which, if we do issue them, will it be from general fund or somewhere else?
Oh, that's a very good question. Um, the, the bonds will pledge water sewer and storm sewer revenues to repay the bonds. So that, that is the only security, no, no money, no pledge from your general fund or property taxes, um, can be legally used. So it will be just those utilities. So if you don't pay the bonds, and let's say that, you know, somewhere down the road, you don't pay, there are covenants, um, in the bonds that will require this, the trustee. If you miss a bond payment and, and we've pledged water sewer and storm sewer, the trustee is required to come in and effectively, you know, force you. I mean, how they would do that, I, you know, fortunately, I haven't seen that. Um, but they can force you to reduce your expenses or raise your rates so that you, um, can make those payments. But it is only those utility rates that, that we are pledging.
Thank you.
Is that because it's an enterprise fund?
It's exactly right.
Chair, you ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
I would make a motion that we set the public hearing for April 28th, 2020. Um, proposed resolution 2020 dash five, uh, for the water sewer storm utilities bond parameters resolution.
As a second, great. So we have a motion by council member higher, a second by council member Lopez for the public hearing being set for April 28th, 2020 for proposed resolution 2020 dash five. And this is a voice vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Great, thank you, everyone. And thanks so much for your time explaining all of that and Laura and Fred.
Thanks Laura. You guys speak English really well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have the fiscal year 2020 budget amendment, the seismic retrofit and remodel of Fire Station Four. And I believe we have Lisa Stout and Chief Matthew who are going to tell us about that.
Council members, this is Lisa Stout. I am the Ogden City Comptroller. The budget action, uh, that we are talking about tonight regard is related to the retrofit of Fire Station Four. And fiscal year 19, 1.4 million was funded towards this project from the Medical Services Fund. Um, when the project went out to bid, and I'll let Chief Matthew address this further, uh, the bid came in higher than anticipated. And we're asking for an additional appropriation to this project of just over a million dollars. This is also coming from Medical Services Fund balance. The total being transferred is $1,073,900 because each fund needs to balance. The, um, the amount in the budget appropriation really takes that 1,073 and doubles it. So the budget action, um, I'm doing math. It's actually $2,147,800 because it recognizes the transfer out of Medical Services and the transfer into the CIP Fund. Once this transfer is made, that will leave a fund balance in Medical Services of about approximately 1.3 million dollars. And Chief, I'll, I'll turn the time over to you to talk more about the project itself.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Um, Madam Chair and council members, thank you for considering, uh, setting a public hearing for this particular item. The, um, once again, the project, when we did station two and five, we did station five in 2008 and it was roughly 1.1 million. When we did station two in 2013, it was about, uh, 1.3 million. So when we estimated the cost of this project after we completed station two in 2013, we only added roughly around a hundred thousand dollars, thinking that costs wouldn't escalate that much. But in the last four or five years, construction costs have really accelerated. Um, I believe we were funded for this project a little over a year or more than a year ago. And we were hoping to kind of get the drawings done architecturally and then hopefully see a dip in construction costs, which unfortunately we haven't. Uh, we pre-qualified five bidders. Uh, four of those were local reputable construction companies. And we've completed the architectural work. We've got the bids now in. The five bids were within $300,000 of each other. The low bid, uh, which we're talking about is 2,037,000. Uh, it consists of, uh, the, the request for the additional 1,073,000 consists not only the cost for the 2,037,000, but also $40,000 for relocation. We're going to have engine four, which is in West Ogden right now relocated to approximately 3,300 South, 1,300 West, keeping that, uh, on the west side of the Bay Duck so we can serve West Ogden and the industrial park and the airport. Uh, we're going to take the ambulance and move it to station one downtown at 22nd and Lincoln. Uh, during the construction period, they'll be vacated for approximately six to seven months. Hopefully, we're going to start, uh, the first of May on this, this project. All the architectural has been completed. We're ready to vacate and begin the demolition and, and make the seismic enhancements, the fire sprinkler enhancements and, and the overall upgrades to have, uh, single-use dormitories, single-use bathrooms. Uh, the additional funds will also pay not only for the architectural and relocation, but, uh, the stationary learning system, some furnishings for around $60,000 and then still have a $200,000 contingency in case we run into anything unanticipated. We're hoping that we, we won't run into significant change orders because we think we've refined this. This building has the same layout footprint as the other two stations. So we think we've identified all the things we need to add initially. And so we don't anticipate a significant amount of change, uh, to the, to the project. Uh, this is the last station of the three that are recommended to be remodeled from the management audit that was completed, uh, by the council back in 2007, as well as a replacement of station three. So, uh, in basically 13 years, uh, this will mark the completion of the significant upgrades and replacement of a station that were recommended back then.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council members? I really like your background there, Chief.
Well, it is apropos because we've been working for the last month on nothing but dealing with EMS response, modifying field care, taking care of our employees. Fortunately, we don't have no firefighters as of today, knock on wood, that have tested positive for COVID. And we're taking care of COVID-like patients every day. And, uh, our world has been, been turned upside down the last month and a half, but our personnel are handling it rather well. And we appreciate the administration's support.
We appreciate your efforts very much and we're very happy no one is ill. Any other questions? Great, so tonight we'll be just asking to set the public hearing for April 21st. Um, so that way, um, uh, members of the public could give feedback through our various methods and then also provide input at that April 21st meeting. There's no other comments? Would anybody like to?
I'd make that motion that we set the public hearing for April 21st on the proposed order of 2020 to 15 about the seismic retrofit and remodel of Fire Station.
Thank you. So we have a motion by council member higher, a second by Vice Chair Blair to set the public hearing for April 21st, 2020 for proposed ordinance 2020 dash 13. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. That passes. We really appreciate your efforts, even though, um, this is a challenging time to do so. Thank you, Chief Matthew.
Thank you very much for consideration of this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I got, I publicly have to say, Amy Sue and Janine, thank you very much for, for getting this on the agenda as quick as you did. Um, very much appreciate it so we can keep in costs with, and responding to this issue as quickly as we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, thanks. So finally, we have New Business, the Contract for Auditing Service. And Glenn Simons will be talking to us about that.
Thank you. Um, I'll just give a, a quick rundown. We've, we've talked about this, uh, in the work session and I've, I've sent some correspondence to the council, uh, providing some additional background. But, uh, the city's current, uh, contract for auditing services has ended with the finalization of the FY19 audit. Um, earlier this year in January, the, the council office, uh, published an RFP for auditing services. And, uh, we had six firms submit proposals. Um, of the six, uh, the Audit Selection Committee interviewed four of the firms. And, uh, prior to, uh, those interviews we did a couple of weeks ago, Lisa Stout and I, uh, called the references for all four of the firms that we interviewed. All of the firms we interviewed met all the requirements that we put forth in the RFP and all of them had excellent, uh, references. Um, after we, we went through the interviews and, and talked as a committee, uh, the committee felt that HBME was, uh, the best choice for the city. Um, the committee felt that their experience, uh, with our form of government, with, uh, our ERP system and, uh, with audits of municipal airports, uh, put them, uh, ahead of the others. Um, and, uh, their price, uh, was, uh, among the most competitive of those that submitted proposals. Um, the contract, uh, for the services is for three years, which would begin with the FY20 budget. And, uh, there is an optional, uh, two-year extension if the council wants to approve that in a few years. Uh, but we will bring that to you, uh, three years from now, the appropriate time. Um, so the proposal there is, is for you to, uh, approve that contract as recommended by, uh, the audit committee. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Glenn. Any questions or comments? I see no council members with raised hands. Great, would somebody like to, um, provide a motion for that item?
Yes, Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt, uh, resolution 2020 dash seven.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by council member higher and a second by council member Blair to adopt, um, resolution, proposed resolution 2020 dash seven, Contract for Auditing Services. And this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Higher?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye. Aye, I can't hear anybody.
I don't know. Is she still there? I see like a little, uh, pulsing thing there, but I don't hear anything.
Her 40 minutes are up.
Chair Chaburka?
Um, yeah, so we got council member, okay, um, aye. So that passes, I think. You got come, uh, Vice Chair Blair's vote as well?
I did.
Okay, sorry about that. I just can't see your face. It's making me crazy. Um, thank you so much for your patience with this process. So that passes. So, um, yeah, the Contract for Auditing Services, great. Awesome. So now, um, we are on to the comment section of the meeting. And, um, we have the written public comments, uh, that were submitted. And I don't know, I don't think I mentioned at the beginning of this portion of our meeting, for the public meeting, that we have accepted the comments that have come in the form, um, that have been sent. And for this week, we have four comments there. And at this time, I invite any council members, if they'd like to comment about those. We aren't going to accept any other public comment forums right now, but we can address those if you'd like. And I have them here too, so I'm happy to address those with my notes. One of them, for example, um, was a constituent who was in support of the moratorium on evictions and foreclosures. And I'm, I'm happy to report that soon after our meeting, maybe the next day, uh, the governor did, uh, provide, uh, moratorium on evictions, uh, through May 15th that applies to people that are affected by the COVID-19 outbreak. And so I'm, I'm happy that we actually don't have to pursue that further because that, um, actually happened. So update there. Any other council members like to comment on any of the written comments?
Uh, Chair Chaburka, I'd like to comment on two items. Uh, I'd like to comment on the, uh, the Marshall White comment. Uh, so, uh, at some point, I'd like to ask, either us or the administration, uh, what is the latest developments on, on the Marshall White? As we all know, um, this is kind of in limbo. So I, I'd like to know. And I know these are difficult times now and that might change a ballgame on what we can do. But, uh, I'd love to, I'd love to know about that.
Great. And I know that we were going to discuss that just a little bit, um, at the beginning of the CIP conversation that I think will happen after this and then also next week. Um, just that I know, um, all council members are very interested in making sure that we make some progress in that area to come up with a plan for our approach, uh, around what to do about the Marshall White. And I know that the administration was, um, you know, uh, going to put back in place the Marshall White Advisory Board to help with that work. And so maybe when, um, the mayor, um, makes comments, if he'd like to speak to that, he can. Um, because I think we, several of the council members also wanted to try to, you know, have that discussion at least throughout the budget session too. But with this new situation, it might change that conversation a little bit. But I agree, I would like some more information about that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, let's see, there was one more. Um, yeah, just comments about, um, how, um, how we are going about conducting our public session through the Zoom platform. And, um, we kind of addressed this in the work session, but if you weren't there, we really are trying our best to accommodate all folks in this forum to hear voices and hear your ideas about things. Um, but as you can see, our, our meetings go on quite long, um, in this format. And so for now, we're going to take the written comment or the phone call comment to put as part of the public record and give an ample time for you to give comments in those ways or to contact council members individually, um, as you would. Um, for example, I have a whole list of comments that people have written to me about that are different topics than these. And I try to write back to people individually or, or follow them up or connect them with people in the administration or staff that maybe they should talk with about their issues. Um, so that's where we are with the public meeting and public comment this time. Any other council members like to make comments about the written comments?
Chair Chaburka, I, we, this isn't a written call that came directly to the council about concerning the security audit at, uh, the airport. Wanted to thank, uh, the administration as well as our, our airport manager, Brian Garrett, for his clarifying statement about what is actually being required and who's requiring it. It isn't near as, uh, onerous as was originally explained to us, so. And they did get a, a reprieve on the time, so, um, I'm, I'm glad that all those things have been followed up on and handled in a expeditious way.
Great. Well, maybe Councilman, Councilman Higher, you might be leading out with council comments. Um, let's see, I'm not sure if the mayor has any comments, if he'd like to make any.
Uh, Chair?
Yes.
You have to get him on.
Hi, um, I had a, uh, email come to me, uh, well, it came to the council about cigarette butts on 25th Street. I don't know if we, as a city administration, needs to look at that or working with 20th, uh, 25th Street Alliance to see if we can maybe help out. Where she's, the comments were that they were picking up quite a few cigarette butts along 25th Street. And, hmm, so I wondered if something we should look at, that process. So I wondered if something we should look at, that process.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor Caldwell.
Hi.
Oh, we can hear you. That's fantastic.
Well, I got a new camera and a new speaker.
So sorry about those technical difficulties.
Well, hopefully they've been corrected. Hey, I just want to tell everybody, we appreciate how difficult this is, to do this on a virtual basis. And how much we appreciate everybody's patience as we go through some of these difficult times. I mean, it's the same thing in my own family. And I've said that a handful of times on Facebook Live and a number of other places. This is, we're in a whole new age and, and environment. And so finding ways we can work together, I think, really matter. And it's important that we keep working on being better at communicating to our public and with each other. And so I, I appreciate that. And we're all exhausted. And I think it's really important that we recognize that. We appreciate that. We're in, you know, really unique times right now. And as we go through the budget process and as we just saw through the last handful of presentations, we appreciate your questions and your we're transparent with everybody. And we really share what's going on in our community. And, and I want to thank you for your diligence, your patience, and your willingness to continue working on all this stuff. So thank you very much. And I don't have a, a, a great deal of insight to give that we haven't done over our Facebook lives and, and dealing with the health department and everything else. I just want you all to know that I really appreciate your willingness to sit in, listen, and, and all together.
And I mean, that's my comment to you, Mayor Caldwell, is I really appreciated those Facebook updates. And, you know, I think it really helps to have the community feel like, you know, they're connected to what's actually happening because I think everybody's feeling the same way, a little bit like we're figuring this out as we go. And it definitely helps some. And then if we share those out with people too, they can understand what the city's doing in its part to help address the, the COVID issues. And I think it's fair to say, I think we have you for work session next week to do some updates so we can get a little bit more into some of those things there.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm happy to tell what, what we know. The thing is, there's no playbook for what's going on right now.
Agreed.
And so I'm happy to give all that I know and that we have figured out and we've worked with the health department and the state health department and lieutenant governor to figure out. So I'm, I'm more than happy to give all that information out.
Great, thank you. And I'm really glad that your mic worked. That was intense. When I was trying to interpret what you were saying, yeah. Great. Council members, does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make?
Chair Chaburka, just the, the last quick comment. I have a kind of this burning need to just say regarding Angel Castillo's comment. You know, I, I, I understand what, what we're going through is difficult. And I understand that it's exhausting and I understand that it's different and it's challenging. And I don't have an answer for how to do this effectively. But, but I, but I feel uncomfortable not being able to get to hear the comments from our constituents. I know we already talked about this on our work session. And, and I know that everybody's trying to do the best they can, so I'm not criticizing anybody. Like to put that on the record. I'm not doing that. It's just something that it's in my mind that I wanted to say it. Thank you.
Chair, if I could just make a, a quick comment?
Please.
So the weather's getting nice and we're all getting antsy. And we've all been really vigilant in staying inside and socially distancing ourselves. And we've still got some time left on that, that ticking meter for us to stay, stay vigilant on our social distancing and washing our hands. And, and it's going to be tough because we're all going to get antsy really soon. So I just want to remind everyone that if we continue to do this, this is going to help. It, it's going to help and help flatten that curve. It's going to help with people not getting infected. And, and we'll, we'll soon be back to being able to listen to people in public, I, I hope, sooner than, than later. So stay vigilant out there.
Please.
I would like to also thank not only our council staff, but we, you as council members. You know, I thought, well, gosh, this, this will be pretty easy to go through and just sit in my house and, and enjoy. Well, I don't know if enjoy is the right word, but the council meetings. But I, I think meeting in chambers is a lot easier than what we're doing here. So, but I also would like to thank the administration of the city. They, our, we're employees of administration are, are providing the services. They're collecting the garbage. They're making sure the streets are taken care of, the parks are taken care of, and the green waste is operating. And they're providing the services to kind of ease some of the burdens that we as citizens are experiencing. This is not an, an easy time. In fact, Janine mentioned that this is uncharted courses and it is, it's uncharted. We've never been through this and I hope we don't go through it again. But I, I, I just would like to thank the administration. And also, secondly, the last thing is to thank our citizens to be, for their patience and their understanding. And we're all into this together. And, and our citizens are assisting us to make through, see us to the end of this project or this illness that we have throughout the world. And a comment to Mayor Caldwell, I think if you check with Jay Hill, he could get you a playbook, Mayor, for this if you want, so.
Any other council comments? Okay, thank you so much, everyone. And so now, while adjourned, we'll go back to the work session for a period. Maybe we will-
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn and maybe take a little five-minute delay, a little-
Second.
Seventh inning, seventh inning break. Motion to adjourn and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks. See you in five minutes.